Some of the pressure on the transport budget, albeit the increase in the number of children looked after and the impact on on the residential market for um for children's social care. The the work of the task and finish group has been fabulous in terms of bringing together a focus. Um. We've managed to mitigate some of these overspends by a million pounds. Some of the ways in which we will mitigate them for next year is in the next paper about what our proposals are to address some of these issues. Um. What what I wanted to impress upon you was the extent to which, you know, we do not want to be in a position where children and families are overspending. We are, I think, um, mirroring some of the national issues going along, uh, both in terms of um the increasing number of children looked after, some of the issues that we've got in terms of recruitment and retention. Uh, and and um to finalise my comments, uh, one of the, one of the factors that has resulted in this projected overspend going up in month seven was the two million pounds due to the uplift in the foster care fee uplift that was the subject of the executive board discussion. Um. So some of that big jump in this paper is largely down to that two million pound increase. I think, given everything that we've talked about, it is the right and proper thing to do. But one of the consequences is that it it falls through into our bottom line. I I'll pause there. There's a lot of detail in the report, some of which is children and families. But you've got the report for the for the whole of the council for the context. Um. We will continue to have um a really sharp focus on our budget and uh undertaking our best endeavours to produce a balanced budget. Um. This year, for reasons that have just been described, it hasn't been possible. Um. But it's not a situation we take lightly at all. Thank you, Chair.
Uh. Does any other officer want to comment on it before I open it up to the group? No? Okay. Does anybody have any sort of questions for the officers on this one?
Um. I just wanted to ask the external residential placements. I mean, it's always been a problem, hasn't it? Do you, is that, has that risen? Is that because I know cases are increasingly complex and we often have young people with some really quite extreme sort of difficulty? So are you finding that you're needing to use more external residential placements? Because what we've got within the city isn't able to meet their needs. And we, are you having to sort of look to how how many cases are you needing like really quite bespoke placements for? And on page sixty three as well, just looking at the breakdown, you've obviously got a figure for external residential placement. You've you've also got an additional figure for secure welfare, which I presume is that's then obviously on top of the external residential placement. So they're quite big figures, aren't they? And IFAs, that's independent fostering placement. So are we sort of, how are we going in terms of recruiting more internal foster, uh, you know, recruitment of internal foster carers as well?
So in answer to your question, um, we have, um, you know, the birth rate in Leeds has fallen. However, what we are seeing, and I think it's referenced in the paper, is, um, I suppose, um, that's the population peak in terms of adolescents moving through. Um. And I think that is, um, you know, that's a factor in this. I think, um, the pandemic, you know, there's no doubt about it. We have seen an impact of the pandemic, just in terms of adolescents who do have more complex needs. Um, you know, there are issues um in terms of child exploitation, um, which actually sometimes, not always, but sometimes do mean that actually the best place for a child is not to be in Leeds at any particular time. It's not always the case, um, and that needs to be carefully, um, assessed. Um, there is, you know, there is, we need to have that focus on, I suppose, growing our own in terms of our own internal provision. Um, we've talked already at scrutiny this morning around the plans um to continue to increase the numbers of our own internal foster carers, to continue to increase the number of children who can um live with family. Um, we do have um an investor saves in this councillor Venna set out, you know. Um, we are building, you know, we will have, um, establishing, um, eight additional um children's homes in Leeds. One of the issues that we do have, and it's a national issue, I meet regularly with the directors of course cities um across the country, I meet um regionally with directors, um, is 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 matching children at times within our own provision. Um, it's a really detailed, careful process that we have to go through to ensure that when we place children together, that um the individual needs can be met. Um, when we're looking to establish the new children's homes, they will be small and children's homes are probably for about two young people at a time. And that will be a rareness to have that matching process. Um, there has been occasion where we have had some of our own children's homes, which could take up to four young people, where we've only been able to have one young person placed there just because of the complexity of their needs and the fact that we can't place other children with them. Um, we've already, um, you know, talked about, um, and again, it does link to the paper that's coming on in terms of, um, some of our response to adolescents. The other thing that we have seen, and it's small numbers, but, um, some quite young children, um, you know, whose needs cannot be met. Um, you know, within a family setting, we would never want that to be, um, long term, clearly. So there's something about us developing provision internally to respond to that small um cohort of children, um, too. So it's very, very complex. Um, again, um, you know, nationally, locally, regionally, core cities and directors are struggling with placements, as councillor Venna has said, um, just in terms of the cost of those and the rising cost of those in terms of the, um, private sector. Some of that links to recruitment, retention, um, you know, and we, that is out with our control. Again, I suppose I'll I'll refer back to the, um, Josh McAllister's National Review um and the recommendations coming out of that in terms of, um, local authorities working at a regional level to develop what they're calling regional care cooperatives. So recognising that there's a role on a regional level for local authorities to come together to think about, um, the provision that's needed in that, um, region and to think about how, um, you know, how that can be developed, how it can be managed, um, cross authority, you know, um, in Leeds, we do have the White Rose Framework. Um, we are, um, we do have a lead role in, um, the delivery of that White Rose Framework. So again, I think we're really well placed to take up some of the opportunities um around, you know, the conversations that will be had around those regional care cooperatives. So there's an awful lot of work going on, um, but it's very, very complex.
Just also noticed the figure on transport is very high as well, isn't isn't it? Is, can you just tell us a bit more about that?
Yeah, I'm just conscious of that. I didn't answer your question just in relation to, um, secure. So again, within our residential, um, homes, uh, and including, um, adult back within that. Um, one of the real challenges that we have has been around recruitment and retention. And so, um, you know, obviously we have to have really stringent ratios of staff for children, which means that we have had to rely on agency. Um, so that's been a real, um, pressure in terms of some of our own residential establishment, including, um, adult beck. Um, I'm sure Tim will come in on transport, because, um, he, um, is our expert in relation to transport. But again, it's made up of a number of pressures, just in terms of recruitment tension, in terms of getting drivers, in terms of fuel, in terms of, um, pay, um, you know, for, um, for for drivers, but also, as has been referenced, the increase in terms of the number of children who do have an education health care plan. And it it, we will come on to it in terms of our, um, our savings proposals, but I perhaps just let him come in on that for a wee bit more detail.
Um, thank you. Yeah. So the pressure on transport is, uh, across all areas of transport, really. Um, there is some pressure on the children looked after transport budget. Um, there's some pressure on the money with, that we provide to the West Yorkshire Combined Authority in terms of the school's bus network. Uh, but the biggest area of pressure is is around, um, home to school transport, the children and young people with SEND. The bulk of our transport provision is provided by, um, passenger transport within the city council. Um, and the split in terms of provision is, it's it's round about sixty percent in-house fleet, forty percent reliance on the private hire trade in the city. Uh, what we've been experiencing, um, in in terms of some of the pressure on that home to school transport, uh, is a reduction in the number of private hire operators in the city over the last couple of years, uh, which has had an upward pressure on the the prices that these routes, um, achieve when they're put out to tender. Um, we've also experienced, um, inflationary pressure from the cost of fuel and pay pressure in terms of, um, uh, effectively offsetting some of the cost of the, um, the the pay pressure on drivers and escorts. Um, we've reflected long and hard on transport and there are all sorts of proposals in the next paper around how we offset some of those, some of those pressures. Um, and without wishing to stray into some of the things in the next paper, what we've been trying to do is increase our efforts in in a number of different areas. And perhaps two are worthy of mention now. One is around independent travel training. Um, and the other one is around personal transport allowances so that we can provide a personal allowance to parents or carers to help get their children, uh, to school rather than rely on some of the provision that the council and or the private hire trade in the city can provide. Um. Just to finalise my comments, um, if if all those pressures weren't sufficient, um, we have seen, um, big increases in the number of children with education, health and care plans. Um, I'm trying to do work on the transport assessment at an early stage in the EHCP process so that we can start off as we sort of need to go on with some of these transport offers from the council, um, as we, um, sort of fulfil our statutory duties around SEND transport.
All right, thank you. Um, Julie's already covered probably some of what I might have been asking about. But and and this does also stray probably into the into the next agenda item as well. But I know that you had a a drive to recruit more foster carers. Um, was it last year? I can't remember now. Um, but I wonder how successful that was, whether that's just been sort of absorbed and whether there's plans for continuing that.
It's absolutely, to be honest, we have an absolute constant drive on recruiting more foster carers. So we're never going to be taking our foot off that pedal. You know, it's again, because it's central to our strategy to provide children with family placements. Um, we're doing very well. We fare very, very well. Um, I think I was just having a look in one of the previous papers, I think seventy five percent of our children and young people in care are in foster care placements. Um, one of the things that we are doing, um, is, and again, this links back to, um, I suppose, what we know about the makeup of the children coming into care at the moment in terms of adolescence, is that we are, um, developing an additional foster care level. So what we recognise is it does require a particular skill skill set and to respond to the needs of adolescents. I started my career in residential children's homes, um, and, you know, love working with adolescents. And I think you've really got to love working with adolescents, um, in order to be, to do it effectively. Children know, you know, when you are sort of engaged with them, when you're really passionate. Um, so what we are doing is we're, um, establishing an additional level of foster carers who will, um, be remunerated on an enhanced rate to reflect the particular skill set that we are looking for. Um, so there's a range of what that goes on, you know, around sort of recruitment, uh, you know, whether that is, um, you know, what our offer is, you know, whether it's training, whether it's financial remuneration, whether it's Mockingbird in terms of the support that we put around our foster carers, um, you know, a whole range of work. And, um, we are, um, you know, completely focused on that.
Uh, thank you. Uh, councillor Bowden next. If if I know it's it's a it's a huge temptation, but if you can try to avoid moving into the next item, uh, on the agenda, um, I'd be very grateful. Thank you.
Um, yeah, it's just to sort of highlight what councillor Venna was saying before about sort of kind of how disgraceful it is that there is a market, um, or where we do appear to be overcharged with the protection of vulnerable children. I mean, the breakdown of the cost is eighteen million for seventy four children. And, um, so that works out like, on average, like two hundred and forty thousand per child. Um, but it is great to see the council's moves to sort of adapt and uh, adapt and re- and refurbish so we can, uh, make those, uh, those cost savings. It says that there'll be, uh, six, six placements by the end of twenty, uh, twenty three. Um, is that though the continued direction to keep adapting provisions to be able to bring in further children going forward?
Yeah, I think it comes back to that overall strategy, you know. So if we have, um, more, um, families who feel able to provide, um, care for children within their extended family when they need that. If we have more, um, you know, foster carers, um, who might be, um, kinship carers, you know, who might be prepared to look at special guardianship orders. Um, if we do have additional residential provision, um, you know, if we have that real focus on early intervention and reducing the need for children, you know, safely reducing the need for children to become looked after in the first place. You know, it's it's a, it's a, it is our strategy, you know, so it's made up of very different dimensions. But, um, essentially, our focus is on where it's safe and appropriate, you know, for children to be with family.
You chair, um, just to respond to to councillor Bowden, there does need to be national leadership around this issue, around the profiteering, um, that, so as Julie said, in the review of children's social care, there is this recommendation around regional care cooperatives, which goes some way to trying to wrestle back some control. Um, but it's really, it, I mean, you're you're right, actually, two hundred and fifty thousand per child per year is just not an unusual figure to be quoted for an external residential placement. But there's also the same issue with agency staff, with agency social workers. So Julie and the other DCSs in the Yorkshire and Humber region have signed a memorandum of cooperation about what the cap is, they will pay for agency staff. And that's to stop authorities bidding against each other, which was happening because of the chronic national recruitment and retention problems in in social care. You've got this national issue where authorities are outbidding each other for agency social work, which of course just drives the price up and up and up. So a number of regions, like our region, the DCSs have signed these memorandums of cooperation and the same on the adult side as well. But they've done that in the absence of any kind of national leadership around the issue. Ofsted have raised concerns about it. I've been in some local government association events with Ofsted, where they've said they're really concerned about the practice of some agencies in the financial incentives they use to get staff and in the practice. Because and you, it's really understandable that most of the social workers going into agency work are young. You know, it's people aged twenty to twenty nine in the first five years of their career. And in a cost of living crisis, you could totally understand why young people are going where the money is. But you're not getting the same CPD, you're not getting the same peer support that you would if you were in a social work team, you know, permanently in a council. So there is a real issue around around the profiteering that's happening in agency work and in external residential and areas are trying to, um, gain control over that largely by our own in-house provision, but it is a national problem. Thank you.
Uh, Jackie?
I I just want to talk about Little Owls nurseries. Um, I'm just wondering how do we advertise to parents? Um, you know, that there is, you know, our nurseries there. Do we do it through midwives when parents have children? Because that'd be a good way of maybe trying to get parents to know where the nurseries are and stuff like that. Um, I haven't, my children are well grown up now, but I remember we used to have a pack with loads of information when when you're first becoming a new mum, because that's when you need nurseries, is when you start going into work. So is our our advertising strategy good enough if our nursery levels are going down? I know some have been amalgamated because of staff shortages and stuff. But my query is that I know we're reducing nurseries right now, but will we be able, if the numbers increase, will we be able to go back the other way?
Um, thank you. Um, so I suppose, you know, the first thing to say is that the local authority does have a duty in terms of sufficiency and ensuring that we do have, uh, enough, um, nursery provision, early years provision within the city. So that's, um, you know, it's a clear duty and we have to evidence, uh, that we are, um, responding to that effectively. Um, in terms of the Little Owls provision, um, absolutely, there's a clear, um, marketing strategy that, um, the centres have, which they continue to adapt. Um, I think in terms of your comment or your question in relation to health colleagues, our, um, not to nineteen fin service or health visiting service actually sits alongside, it's integrated with our children's centres. So the very sort of, um, example that you've given there in terms of having the conversation, you know, with midwives, with health visitors, um, with, uh, with new parents, you know, is central. Um, also, we have just in terms of the two-year-off, two-year-old offer, you know, let us go around around that. Um, but the bottom line is it's not resulting in all of our nurseries being financially sustainable and despite our best interests. Uh, we have seen an impact of the pandemic, um, and in terms of different working patterns, you know, more people being able to work at home, um, perhaps share childcare in a way that they didn't do before. Um, so I think, um, you know, as as, um, as has been seen and as you've referenced, we have taken the decision, um, to amalgamate some of our nurseries. And we do have, um, you know, a review underway in terms of, um, others in terms of potential closure. But I think there's a wider conversation, um, and we are string on to the next paper. So I'm going to stop myself, um, chair. Um, but in terms of your specific question, the marketing strategy and how we can improve that, again, there's just an absolute constant, um, focus on that. And we've also looked to, um, so as an example, One Adoption West Yorkshire, um, who is our regional adoption agency, you know, looking at actually, um, some of their best practice as an example in terms of social media, digitalisation, you know. So where wherever we can see best practice or we feel that we can learn around that, you know, we're really sort of trying to take advantage of that.
Thanks, Julie. I I think we're in danger of straying on, uh, so I'll I'll call a halt to the uh, subject after the next question, which is Kate, right?
It was just a really quick question about legal services, um, costs. Even again, are you finding that because cases are kind of increasingly complex, the the budget, that the the costs of proceedings in court and legal services, you find that that's increasing as well?
There is just that direct correlation and also delay in terms of, um, again, impact of Covid, um, just on the whole sort of court process.
Okay, thanks very much indeed for that. Um, the the move on to the recommendation, uh, which is we are asked to consider the executive board reports and past comments on the children and families section of it, which I think you've done in some considerable detail. Um, I've I've just sort of been scribbling down some of the, uh, the issues that have been raised, number of cost of children looked after, Little Owls, foster care charges, uh, trans- transport, pay pressures, and I'm sure Rob will have picked up anything else that I may have, uh, have missed there. I'm sure these will spill over, I think, into, uh, into the next, into the next item, which is number eleven, um, which is the initial, initial, uh, budget proposals for twenty three, twenty four. Now, um, it it actually also covers the rest of the medium-term financial strategy over the following sort of two years. Um, I'm perfectly happy for you to comment in 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 the longer term. Uh, but bear in mind that what we want to really do is is to comment uh, about next year's budget, um, for the executive board, early next month, I think, on the eighth, prior to the, uh, Budget Council on the twenty second. So thanks very much. Um, Tim, are you leading on this one as well? Fiona, sorry.
Fine, thank you. I'll just make some brief introductory comments. Um, so these proposals do include some reductions and we can't kind of shy away from that. The council's in an absolutely awful position in terms of our budget for next year. However, more positively, as we've already referred to, there are a number of investor save proposals and for children's, these are primarily around either children coming out of care or not going into care in the first place. So there's a proposal specifically that's about looking in detail at the external residential placements and children returning to Leeds, whether that's into, you know, our new children's homes that we're building or reunification with families or foster care. There's a proposal about working with an identified group of adolescents on the edge of care to prevent them from coming into the care of the authority. And there's also a proposal about increasing capacity and commissioning in order to drive down costs, which might sound a bit counterintuitive, but it it refers to what we were just talking about, about very expensive care packages. And this is really learning from adult social care, because there's much more of a culture in adult social care. And I think this is a national issue, not just Leeds, of haggling over care packages. So adults' commissioning are very expert at driving down prices. Um, and so we're, we've been working in children's with adults to get some of their expertise. But there's a specific proposal that's about creating more capacity in commissioning in order that we can do some of that negotiation and get some of that expertise to get some of those packages down. And given the eye-watering costs, which Jordan kind of worked out, how much that is per child, you know, you you could imagine that being cost effective very quickly if we can get some of those children out of those placements. And also if we can get some of the cost of those placements reduced. Um, so I'll leave it there, Chair. Thank you. Pass on to Tim.
Tim, do you want to comment?
Thank you, Chair, yes. Um. I'm I'm conscious that this scrutiny board has had the opportunity to look at some of these proposals at the working group that we had before Christmas. Um, and effectively what we've got in these pa- papers doesn't digress from any of the proposals that we that we talked about on the thirteenth of December. Um, if I can, just to highlight one or two key things from my point of view from the papers. Um, so we've brought forward proposals that total eleven point five million pounds worth of savings. Um, and in in common with previous years, we've split that between what we've termed business as usual proposals and service review proposals. Uh, the distinction I'm drawing there is that something that is a service review requires consultation with staff, um, with, uh, with citizens, uh, with whoever it might be, including partners and the business as usual ones as effectively things that we can just get on with. Um, the the balance of our proposals has shifted this year more towards the service review area for the reasons that councillor Venna has just highlighted. Um, and and those are all set out on page one hundred and two in the pack. Um, and and we did have some discussion at the working group in December about those. And councillor Venna has just highlighted, um, some of the really, really significant ones in terms of those service reviews. Um, what all this means, um, is that the children and families budget will constitute just over twenty five percent of the council's net managed budget. Um, and and one of the ways in which, um, in in my mind, I helped to piece together the budget uh, is the table on page one hundred and seventy two of the report, uh, which gives you some indication of where we started at, what we've added, what we've taken away and where we've arrived at in terms of next year's budget. Um, so I don't intend to read out the the table, but I just wanted to highlight one or two key facts from the budget, because I think it says something about the approach that we've taken in terms of, um, protecting, um, services for the, some of the most vulnerable people in the city. Um, so the the net managed budget, the twenty two, twenty three is is in round figures, a hundred and thirty three million. And that table goes through a number of changes that we've made to the budget that's reflected in both those service review proposals and indeed in terms of some of the amendments to the budget. So for example, the first one on that is the the cost of the pay award. So we've provided in the budget in excess of seven million pounds for the cost of the pay award. Um, we we've also, um, provided eight point three million. We've also provided eight point three million in respect of inflationary pressures. So some of the, some of the areas where we are seeing inflation, I've talked about transport, we've talked about children looked after. We've tried to give an accurate reflection of what we think the the level of inflation will be on those budgets. There's also energy inflation included there at one point five million. And because of the problems that we've just described in the transport budget, we've tried to restate the baseline for the transport budget and added in two million pounds for that. And also, we've included round about one point six million to reflect demand and demographic changes. So reflecting on some of the conversation that we've just had about the number of children looked after, children looked after in the care of the local authority and some of those issues around poverty and the cost of living crisis and how that might be driving some of those figures, we've included one point six million for that. And then we get down towards the bottom and there are some of the significant savings figures to try and balance up the budget. The approach that we've taken is very much around a system being in fine balance and that is our, holding our nerve with the children and young people's plan and not wanting to digress from that. Holding our nerve with our partners in the city predominantly health, but all sorts of education partners as well. And trying to deliver the sort of savings we need to manage the budget by doing the sort of things that council and Vena has just talked about in terms of a renewed focus on some of the cost of those packages. So significant savings from the cost of children looked after, both in terms of looking to reduce the number of children looked after and also looking to have a really sharp focus on some of those commissioning arrangements for some of those packages. The average, as we've just identified, for an external residential place is two hundred and fifty thousand pounds a year. There are packages that cost significantly more than that. The average for an external residential package for a child with special educational needs and disability is far greater than a quarter of a million pound a year. And I know in some respects, it is a nonsense to talk about averages, but it helps us plan through the budget because we make assumptions about those unit rates and we make assumptions about both the number of children looked after and their tenure of looked after, whether it's foster care as I F as external residential in house and so on and so forth. The other thing that's reflected in some of these proposals is that further forensic work on children looked after. Because clearly, if we manage to make any savings on, sorry, what did I say? Children looked after, I meant little owls. If we, if we look again at little owls, what we are in effect doing is not altering the base budget, we're just addressing the overspend that's inherent in this year's budget. So whatever we do to address some of the, some of the issues in little owls, it just eliminates the overspend, it doesn't impact on this year's budget. We will have to look at generating other efficiencies across children and families and that's where the transformation agenda is really, really important. So some of these proposals include investing in some of the capacity to deliver on some of these transformational agendas, both around commissioning savings, but also in social care around having the capacity to generate those efficiencies. I've said quite a lot there and not really gone into the detailed proposal. So I think to finalise, there are some savings, there's one point seven million pounds of savings in there around efficiencies. That there are savings around commissioned contracts that we have with the third and private sector around how we deliver these services. There are savings around turning the curve and reducing the number of children looked after. There are savings around commissioning and market management for the cost of children looked after. And there are savings in there around a review of children's centres and commissioned family services working in localities. And there are also savings in there to try and stop what, to my mind, seems to be sort of a recurring theme about projected overspends against the little owl's budget. Sorry, councillor Flynn, I've gone on for far longer than I intended there.
Don't worry, Tim, it's all very good stuff. Does anybody have any questions or comments on it so far? Okay, I'm very interested in the the transformation team sort of agenda, which I know is taking place right across the council, it's not just in children and families at the moment. I mean, I think as Fiona said, adults and health have been very successfully used a transformation team for a number of years now to reduce costs. But it hasn't really grown to any great extent in the other directorates. And I just wondered if someone could give me a little bit more information on on how that's actually going to work and what the effect will be on the quality of service that we provide to children and families.
I'm happy to come in there, councillor Flynn. I think we've talked already and we've made reference about the task and finish group. So essentially, we had an in-year pressures that we needed to address before we started to think in some ways about this year's budget. So the task and finish group was set up really with that in mind. And it's been cross-directorate task and finish group. And so chief officers from different directorates and then we've pulled in colleagues from transport, colleagues from residential care, from looked after children's services, housing. And I have to say, it's been transformative in itself. I don't think, you know, I don't think I've experienced the level of cross-directorate whacking to that extent since I've been in Leeds. So I think, I think there's some principles there in terms of how we work together as a council. And I suppose seeing the council as a system, you know, and if we think about external placements as an example and moving children back into Leeds, you know, safely and appropriately. You know, we're absolutely dependent, you know, in terms of our, our way Leeds provision. So that's provision that we have for children who live in semi-deported, semi-independent accommodation. Ultimately, they will want to have their own tenancy, they'll want to have their own home, but then we're dependent on colleagues within housing. You know, so it's that whole systemic approach. So that group's met fortnightly. It's been chaired by myself and Victoria Bradshaw, so we've co-chaired it. And I think that's a key message there as well, just in terms of that focus on finance, but the focus on outcomes for children. And so as we go forward, what we'll want to do in the transformation services is really take some of those principles and continue to develop those and embed those. We will have colleagues from the different directorates who will sit on the transformation board. We had a whole conversation in CFL T last week about actually, do you know, this is not really about transformation. This is about service delivery because this is business as usual. In some ways, you know, this is, this is what we need to do in order to address the challenges that we've got, which is that cross-council, cross-partnership work. And so we'll have, as I've said, colleagues from different directorates underneath the delivery board, I'm going to call it. And there'll be a number of different work streams. And in some ways, those work streams reflect the service reviews that you have in the paper today. So if we're looking at turning the curve, if we're looking at reducing, safely reducing the need for children to become looked after, looking at reunification, if we're having a written branch review of transport, if we're going to process map from beginning to end, the decision making in terms of, you know, when we do assess a child as needing transport and then how we commission that and deliver that and review that. You know, this is going to require an absolute focused effort. So there'll be individual work streams that reflect the reviews that you have in your paper, there'll be leads for those. But what we're very, very conscious of is we do need the capacity to drive that. You know, what we've seen in the task and finish group is the benefits that we've had in a sense of having key leads for each area. So looking at data, looking at outputs, looking at outcomes on a fortnightly basis, you know, and that requires a lot of capacity. And the other thing I think which is really important to see is that while we obviously need to have that cross-council, cross-directorate approach, we need to bring partners into this conversation, you know, because why would we be looking at transformation and delivery, you know, in isolation? And so as an example, we have the newly established, or relatively newly established population board, now health population board for children and young people in the city. It's the first time really that we've had a strategic health board with a complete focus on children and young people. What that's really enabling us to do is have some of those joint conversations across the system about actually what are our priorities for children and young people. And so, you know, in particular, thinking about transitions, you know, where we do have children with complex needs and who are going to transition and need a service from adults and health, you know, how can we work together? So we're wanting to involve, you know, I will certainly want to think about a different approach to how we perhaps recruit to that service, you know, might it be up to comments? Might we be able to look at how actually colleagues from education, from health and the third sector can contribute to the service that we are wanting to deliver? So I hope that's answered your question.
Very much indeed, Julie. Does anybody else have any comments or questions for officers, Karen?
Okay, Chair, I just wondered if there were any figures that sort of demonstrated children who were looked after pre-COVID and during the years of the COVID have developed mental health issues? Because I do know of families in my ward where they've got looked after children who have suddenly developed this antisocial behaviour, issues with and the bringing things from the past or blaming the carer for the fact that they've been isolated in the home. And that will have an impact on the number of children with mental health issues. So I didn't know if there was a team that were looking at specific mental health issues that have suddenly come to the forefront post-COVID.
Thank you. Yeah, I think that's again, a really valid and pertinent point. And I think what we have seen in Leeds, certainly again across the system, is certainly over the last twelve months, which is interesting. I think perhaps some of the impact of the pandemic, just in terms of complexity of need and absolutely in relation to mental health, I think is coming more to the fore. And I think that's where our work around early help, you know, so we have three early help hubs in the city. And within those early help hubs, we have mental health coordinators who come from the commission from the third sector. So again, what we've wanted to do is really bring that mental health expertise into that early intervention offer. I've talked about our plans around Trauma Informed City. And we have received funding from health colleagues to support our work around trauma-informed approach. So that really is upskilling the workforce, whether that's teachers, whether that's cluster colleagues, whether it's health visitors, early help practitioners around being able to identify at the earliest opportunity when a young person may be struggling with their mental health. But then more importantly and as importantly, to be able to provide a timely and effective response to that. And so again, it's got to be part of our, you know, our early help and prevention strategy. Councillor Vena talked earlier about a future minds strategy. And, you know, so again, an absolute key focus. And it's not just, I suppose, young people. You know, what we are seeing and we have seen, continue to see is the impact on parents and carers really, you know, of of the pandemic. And I think there's something about that accumulative effect. And when you, you know, that accumulative effect of the pandemic, but also then the cost of living crisis, you know, the existing inequalities. So I think, you know, I think for me, what we are seeing is the accumulation of a number of things that have come together and mental health is key.
I just wanted to ask about the intergenerational aspect of the number of children in care and and whether, given that whereby, sorry, whereby care leavers are more likely to have their children taken into care. And I just wonder whether you could talk about any work being done to support care leavers in preparation for them becoming parents and then the support once they become parents. And whether that's part of your turning the curve review to address the overall number of children in care in Leeds.
Thank you. Again, that's a really key point. When we talked earlier about our futures programme and I talked about some of the additional investment that we're hoping to secure from health in relation to futures, there's an absolute emphasis on our children who have left care because just as you say, we know that they are much more likely to be in a position where they may have their children removed. But also I think this, you know, again, it's that early intervention. So there's something about how do we, how do we equip, you know, our young people leaving care with the skills that they need in order to appear effectively, really. So that is a key focus of the developments that we want to undertake in futures. And we've also got an archway. So we've developed a new, a new, I would call it one-stop shop in a sense, you know, but a new provision where our young people who have left care can come together and can utilise a whole host of information, advice and support services. And so, you know, absolutely, councillor Matt, and that is, you know, again, it's another key, key focus for us and it is about turning that curve. And when we look at, when we're looking at the turning the curve work, we are focusing on specific cohorts of young people. So as I've already talked about, just in terms of our fit homes and the young people that we know are more likely to be able to be reunified successfully, you know, as a cohort, we'll be looking at care leavers as another cohort who require a specific focus really.
I know we've talked about this in the past at previous meetings, but how much, how closely are we working with CAMHS and health? Because speaking from experience, I think access to mental health, specialist mental health services is really key. It's key in relation to young people experiencing mental difficulties. I know we've got lots of really great organisations where children can go to for mental health support. But I think for those more complex cases where they need specialist support and intervention, there is, there is, there is a problem. I mean, I know of a lot of cases of children that are on huge waiting lists and they're they're at quite acute stages in terms of their need for help. And also thinking about how much we're spending on specialist residential placements, quite often even in specialist residential placements, they aren't getting access to the mental health services. So often the placements break down, they have to move again. That compounds the trauma that these young people have already experienced because they're having to keep moving on. And then thinking about people who leave care and then go on to have children removed, quite often we know it's patterns, don't we? And we see that they've got mental health issues that haven't been addressed. They've experienced trauma, they then have a child removed, it's more trauma. So for me, a massive part of this is access to mental health services, it's huge. And I know we work really closely with health, but is there any more that we can do? I'm sure you're doing everything that you absolutely can, but it's, it's huge, isn't it? We hear a lot in the press about the impact of social care on health and bed blocking because patients, elderly patients can't be discharged because they're waiting for social care placements. But equally, I think a lot of problems in children's social care are as a result of the lack of mental health provision for young people, children and young people.
So again, it's a key priority for us and it's just, it is, you know, it's a live feature of
So again, it's a key priority for us and it's just, it is, um, you know, it's a live feature of, um. You know, a lot of our discussions with health, what I would say, and I go back to the fact that we do now have the um. Health, the children, young people's health population board, and actually some of the conversations that are taking place there. Um, are just invaluable, just about us coming together to look at what the priorities are, what the gaps are, what are we doing well, but where do we need to do better? Um, I've talked about transitions, that's an area where we do think that we could do differently, do better. I suppose in response to your question, uh, it's got to come back to the whole system, you know, so actually if we can prevent. Children, young people having, um, you know, um, issues with their mental health. That's got to be where we've all got to be, um, you know, we want to be. So there's something about our early intervention and prevention that takes us back to our early help hubs, that trauma-informed approach. Upskilling the workforce and early identification, timely response to need. Um, but it also is about where where do we have pressures, you know, and actually how do we work together to respond to some of those pressures? Um, when I've talked about the investment that we're receiving from health and into the trauma-informed work. Um, part of that is, um, part of it is upskilling the workforce, but also part of that is about delivering more one-to-one support. To children who do require um that specialist intervention, you know, whether that is, you know, we we do have a um therapeutic social work team. Uh, based within children and families, uh, which was really highly recommended when we had our recent ILAC. So part of the work that we're doing is how do we expand that, but actually how do we take some of the learning from that. Service that we're providing to children and to further other children um in the city and there's something there about, um, I suppose not working in silos. You know, if we have a really good service over here, actually, how can we learn from that and how can we get a more integrated um approach, so. Uh, I certainly don't have all the answers uh this morning, but what I, you know, what I am, will say is that, um, they're really, really live discussions and they feel. Um, the re- the resulting in action, which I think is the most important thing. Um, and I think just some of the conversations that we're having at the moment with health, um, both within. Um, as I've said, the uh young people's population board, but the partnership executive group, I suppose just about, um, how we, how we combine our funding. You know, actually where we do have pressures, you know, I suppose having those conversations about what are the shared priorities? So that we can really direct our funding in a really targeted way and to get the outcomes that we need.
Um.
Uh, right, thank you. Um, you talk about having some specific um focus, if you like. Um, I wonder whether teenage conception is one of those, I'm actually referring back to the data that we were discussing under agenda item nine. Uh, earlier and although they they've clearly gone down, actually they were already quite high compared to to national. And so I just won- wondered about that.
Again, you know, that goes back to suppose all of the work that we're doing in schools, in colleges. Um, we do have sort of specific services which are jointly funded and by uh children and families director and health. Um, I suppose just to work with young people or support young people, just thinking about personal relationships, um, thinking about, um, you know, P S H E e- education. Um, so again, an awful lot of work going on around that and I suppose it is just taking that, uh, again, that early intervention and preventative. Um, approach.
And there have been some initiatives um in the past that have specifically um worked on that, I was, I. Was on one of those quite a few years ago, not in Leeds. Um, that was targeted, that was, that was actually very, you know, quite effective, so I just was wondering, I know about this. Uh, the finances and everything, but I just wanted to flag that up.
Yeah, thanks, and I I'll draw this one to a close if nobody has any other uh comments or questions. Um, and and just in uh, in summing up, I I I think, uh, Julie, correct me if I'm wrong, I'm sure, uh, you were saying that the. Uh, the car, the pandemic had a a disproportionate effect on children and families and and within children and families. Particularly with regard to more vulnerable children, children looked after, children with special educational needs, children with mental health problems, et cetera, et cetera. Um, and that you uh you welcome the the new transformation uh agenda, you've spoken about integrating. Uh, other services around the council and of course this was one of the recommendations of the council's peer review last year. Um, so we're asked to comment or make recommendations to the next executive board. In the first week of next month prior to the budget council on the twenty second. Um, so uh my view is that we should emphasise this view on the disproportionate effect of the pandemic. Uh, the children and families welcome um the transformation agenda and where it's going to lead us. And I don't know if you've picked up anything else, Rob, for next week.
Thanks councillor Flynn, uh, just to to briefly explain, um, we will be pulling together a composite statement for executive board from scrutiny, which will go through the chairs for their. For their approval, um, prior to submission to that eighth February meeting, as you said councillor Flynn. Thank you.
Uh, thanks, Rob. Uh, moving on to item twelve, which is the work schedule. Um, and if you've got any other suggestions, of course, to the work schedule, what for what's left of the current year, then please, uh, please speak up, Rob, would you like to lead us?
Yes, uh, just just very briefly, Chair, conscious we've been going for a while, um. Yes, so appendix one provides the uh work schedule which um sets out the next two meetings, uh, March, both of them in March, the eighth and the twenty ninth. As uh referred to earlier on by the chair, before he left, there is some uncertainty around a a future meeting, which is currently diarised for the first of February. As the chair set out, I would, I will be uh taking account of member feedback on that today and the decision will be made, as councillor Lam said, by five o'clock in terms of whether that. Goes ahead for the reasons that we discussed in the pre-meeting. Thank you councillor Flynn.
Which takes us very nicely on to the last item, which is the date and time of the next meeting, which I understand you'll know by five o'clock tonight, is that right?
That's correct, Chair, thank you, yeah.
All right, thank you all very much indeed for coming and for being very gentle with me, uh, lovely to be back on this, uh, on the scrutiny board again, hope to see you again in the future. Okay, cheers.